All right, Mr. Townsend, would you be here leading us in the community prayer?
Uh, sure. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. All right, next item on the agenda as always is citizens' participation. Would anyone like to come up and address the board? Seeing no one come up, we'll go on to our next agenda item. I'm gonna take the probably the 6:15 out of order. We've got some questions that we're getting resolved on the warrant item. 6:15 item, discussion and possible vote on comments for mass housing site eligibility application for Ricketts Pond Estates located on Plimpton, Mass. In Plimpton, Mass. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Bott for interpretation.
I've got a couple of pictures.
Great. Take your time.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. I worked for a second. Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tom Bottom, the town planner here in Carver, Mass. I wanted to talk to you about the proposed 40B in Plimpton. I do want to say that my comments tonight wouldn't be any different if this development was in Carver versus in Plimpton. So, the subject location is right here where that crosses at in the sand. The Plymouth, I mean, the Carver, Plimpton Town Line is just south of this. So, to enter into the property, you come in off of Spring Street in Carver, drive to the end of the Ricketts Pond Business Park, and then the road will be continued on from there into Plimpton. That is what the proposed development is going to look like. It is composed of 60 units, 15 of which are affordable. So, in my graphic here, I think.
It's right here at the top.
Mr. Bott, you said 16, 1, 6?
6, 0.
6, 0.
6, 0. Five dozen.
Thank you.
So, 60 units of housing, 54 of which are two-bedroom, and six of which are three-bedroom. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has a requirement that regardless of the developments that you are doing, at least 10% of the units have to be three-bedroom. So, while we've seen a need in lots of places for smaller units, ones in two-bedroom units, three-bedroom units are required under the Massachusetts guidelines for 40Bs. So, what you see highlighted in the pink are where the affordable units will be located at. They're dispersed throughout the development as is required, and they can't be all sort of put next to the dumpster, next to the highway ramp. They have to be dispersed within the development. And it's a requirement under Massachusetts 40B that the units be indistinguishable from the exterior, the market rate units from the affordable units. So, when you look at the exterior, they're all gonna look the same. The differences will be in the interior of the property. So, of these 60 units, as I said, 54 are two-bedroom and six are three-bedroom. The, I'm happy to take any questions in a bit, but my proposed draft comments were that 60 units, this proposed development is consistent with some of the goals of both Carver and Plimpton's 2017 housing production plans. Carver's 2017 production plan talks about keeping growth out of the rural, Carver's rural land and looking at creating modest mixed-use and multifamily housing, including rental options which will match demand created by a major emerging demographic of smaller households and elderly households with smaller units with lower maintenance demands than larger single-family homes. The typical default that we see for 40Bs are three-bedroom detached units because that's what builders are comfortable building, that's what banks are comfortable financing for. So, the vast majority of 40Bs that we see are three-bedroom, single-family units. And while in the Plimpton Housing Production Plan, their goal number four, and they're in the midst of updating their housing production plan as well, it talks about promoting a diversity of housing options in Plimpton to meet the changing needs of an aging population and promote a socio-economic diverse population. The community housing needs are diverse, yet most of the housing stock consists of single-family homes. The town now seeks to require alternatives to large-family, single homes. So, to some extent, the two housing developments, two housing production plans, and many of which look at the same thing because we've been just inundated with three-bedrooms and more of single-family houses. So, to see duplexes is different from what we typically see. These are proposed to be for-sale units and not rental units, as far as I understand. So, the location near Route 44, near Carver area is consistent with Carver's master plan goals, which is talking about more commercial development along the Route 44 corridor to help maintain the rural nature of the community. The development is consistent with the needs for a diverse housing stock, including two bedrooms and duplexes rather than that seeming default. Given its proximity and access through Carver, a local preference should be offered to Carver residents as well. The proposal says a local preference will be offered to Plimpton residents, but the fact that you get your access through Carver and it's immediately proximal to Carver, I don't think it's out of landish to ask for some local preference for Carver residents as well. With the limited access highway abutting the development, the developer should maintain a robust buffer between the residents' yards and the many trucks on Route 44. So, we go back and look at this site plan, and you see that right behind all these houses is Route 44. And if we maintain a lot of that berm along the highway, that'll help to isolate some of these homes from the noise, traffic noise. But as you move further into the site, things start to flatten out a bit. So, one of those recommendations that I would have would be to maintain that robust buffer by limiting the amount of earth removal and planting more screening vegetation, including pollinator species, within the development. Those are essentially my comments. They talk about how this road in Plimpton is proposed to be a public way. When the Ricketts Pond Business Park was developed in Carver and put before the planning board, oftentimes folks ask, well, is this gonna be a public or a private road? Well, oftentimes folks would like to maintain the road as private or as public because they don't have to maintain it into the future. But that's the will of the select board who vote to lay out the way and town meeting who votes to accept the way. So, whether way is public or private is a matter of the future and not of the present. I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have on this, but it is one of those things that we look at as a need for housing. I think many people recognize there is a housing crisis in Massachusetts, in the Northeast, and in many parts of the country. It's not unusual for a 40B to wind up in industrial zoning. This zoning in Plimpton is industrial. And what most towns do as a planning practice is they zone property for agriculture, for residential, for industrial. And oftentimes, they zone those properties for industrial that aren't necessarily attractive to the end-users, to the industrial users. So, it's not unusual to have vacant industrial sites, industrial zone properties, in towns for years and years. So, we see this as a fairly regular occurrence that someone be building housing within an industrial development. One of the things that is, that you see if you go to Plimpton, or if you go to Plymouth, to whatever the super-duper Walmart development is called, I don't really know the name of it, Colony Place, maybe, there's the stores on the front and there's the apartments in the back as you drive through. That is a permitted use of land use under most standards. Putting the residents in the front and the industrial in the back is not a permitted use because at that point, trucks have to roll through a residential development like they have to do with L-Nice development in Kingston. But putting the industrial or non-residential in the front and the residential in the back is a fairly common practice. So, with that, happy to take any questions, happy to incorporate it into our comment letter. Comment letter is due by the 25th, but mass development is, or mass housing is typically gracious enough to take those comments later on if necessary. In comments are welcome by anyone, the town can send them, other individuals can send comments as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Townsend.
Mr. Bott, I'd just like to thank you for including a request for a local preference for Carver residents as well because I had that thought when I first heard of this. And I do think, even though the development is entirely in Plimpton, that since the only access is through Carver, that I think that is a court request that hopefully they'll grant. I think it's appropriate. So, thank you for including that. That's all I have.
On the stretch of road that's in Carver, as far as maintaining it, say hypothetically for snow removal and things like that, how will that work? And what's the length of the road? And, you know, it's gonna have to be plowed at some point, so I'm just trying to understand what our obligation is in all of this. And, you know, I know we have roads that abut other towns and you have to plow and you probably stop and turn around.
Yeah, so, this particular roadway in Plimpton, they do state the length of the road. It is, I think, well, over 1,000 feet long. In the case of Carver, I don't know what the town's plowing policy is for private roads. It's not unusual for towns to plow private roads for safety purposes.
I can interject there if you want. So, we usually, at town meeting, there's usually an article on there for private ways. And that's not someone's driveway, that's something like this, if it's not an accepted way. So, sorry.
Yeah, and a way is one of those technical terms. It's a road created under subdivision control typically, or in this case, through 40B. A driveway is not a way. There's no way. That's that way.
Excuse me, just, Mr. Chairman. So, for my own clarification, so do we plow private ways in Carver?
Traditionally, the answer, I've never seen a town meeting that said no. But, so, for example, it also includes neighborhoods like the Crystal Lake neighborhood, which was built so long ago that if we were to make them public ways, half the yards would be taken up. So, it's typical, I've never heard one, maybe Elaine might have heard one that was said, where people said no, but it's generally, people get it.
Yeah, I am aware of some private ways that are not accepted as public roads. And as far as I know...
No, what I meant was that our private ways, we tend to plow.
Right. So, if they're not accepted as public roads, then the town does not have to plow them. But I, like someone mentioned, sometimes it's determined by public safety that they would prefer those roads to be closed for their access if there was to be an emergency call.
Sure.
And that's their call. So, I just want to make sure there's no confusion.
That's a good point.
That the town doesn't normally plow, they're not obligated to plow private roads or ways.
Correct. Yeah, and it's usually the operations and maintenance DBW who makes that request, and they undoubtedly talk to public safety. That's a good point. Thank you.
And typically, I remember at town meeting, an article that used to be over like 15 grand for these types of roads.
That's right. Yeah.
Yeah, and to that point, my good friend, the long-serving highway superintendent in Kingston who is retiring on November 1st, is spending his remaining weeks in office working with residents in Kingston to point out the things that they have to fix in order for them to plow the streets. The street's getting, say, disrepair, there's potholes, there's catch basins, there's raised structures and things like that. So, he's been going over with various residents what they have to do on their street, bring their contractor in and bring the road up to a standard at least where it could be plowable, not that it's acceptable.
Mr. Ryan.
Oh, sorry, I was gonna say, so I don't know if I really get an answer to the question. Who's gonna be responsible for that section of town that, I mean, in Carver, who's gonna be responsible for, how do you arrange that to, who's gonna cover the plowing of the road when it's ready to be done?
I think that...
So, I think if it's their, if it's their Plimpton, it's a Plimpton subdivision. So, I can't answer this for sure, but if it does not affect public safety getting in there for the needs of the public, then my guess would be that they would not, if it's private and not a public-accepted road, they would not be responsible for the maintenance of that road during a storm.
Yeah, that's a public safety decision, and you're probably right.
So, like them, I don't know.
I guess, sorry, Mr. Townsend.
I was just gonna say, the one comment on this, I think a lot of times we do plow private ways, but normally, there's residents on those roads. In this case, there's no Carver residents on this road. Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe everything in there is a commercial development in Carver.
That's correct.
So, I just don't know if we would prioritize that in our plowing schedule.
But again, I don't think that's our jurisdiction.
No, I don't think it is either.
I guess I was also getting another point, that if somebody's gonna maintain the road, they're just gonna have to do the whole stretch from Carver all the way down, whoever's contracted to plow that area.
And they would probably talk to the public safety departments about that. Mr. Chair.
Ms. Hues.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate you bringing, you're bringing this to us, Mr. Bott. And I'm glad to hear that anyone can comment on it. And you say the comment period is due, ends on the 25th of October?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and all the information that is in the packets is on Plimpton's website. So, I put together a sheet for you folks that we can post online if you'd like as well, for anybody who wants to comment on these, so they can go in, rather than everybody getting one of those colossal notebooks of things that are all different sizes, shapes, and colors, we just created links for them to Plimpton's website, so anybody can go in there and take a look and see what the plans are like this.
So, we can find those on your planning board?
We've got a document I provided for the board. We'll have it put up on our website tomorrow. Maybe tonight if I get out of here by 7:00.
Right. Okay, thank you. No more questions.
I'm not trying to bail on you or anything like that. We have plenty of time to talk about things before 7:00.
Anybody else? It might be worth a site visit, going over and again, seeing the actual location, because I'm still kind of get, I get it, but I don't get it. Meaning, you're gonna enter this development off of Spring Street, which is in Carver. The first thing you see is a currently existing commercial development?
That's correct.
There's stores in it? Okay, so they're paying taxes, right? Commercial taxes. So, it's in Carver, right? So, we have a ton of Carver. If it's not accepted yet, though, right? Right now, the developer is still doing other plowing and everything else?
Yeah, and the good news is the developer is the guy who built the road, and he's got plenty big trucks and plenty big plows.
It's normal. He's taking care of it. At some particular point in time, when it's all built out and everything's built out, someone comes before somebody and says, hey, we'd like to have this accepted. The only rubs are gonna be is, you know, it doesn't make sense to have Plymouth, Plimpton accept the residential and Carver accept the commercial. I don't know how that would work, but that's down the road.
Correct.
Correct. Literally. And can you bring, can you, so, on the slide again? Bring that up? So, you're talking, on the left hand of that development is where 44 is, and we being, is that in Carver?
That is Route 44. So, the Carver Town Line is right here. So, here's Carver, here's Plimpton. There's the Town Line right there.
So, when you talked about berms, so that...
It's in Plimpton, right?
It's in Plimpton. So, we have...
That berm is there already. It's on 44.
But we can't really say to them, we want bigger berms, right? Because it's not in Carver.
Correct. Well, I attribute it to like a lottery ticket. You can't win if you don't buy a ticket. If you don't ask, you may not get what you're looking for.
I was just curious how this would work out.
And it's a perfectly reasonable thing. As you've noticed, there's a ton of dirt out there.
Yeah.
But as you get closer into Plimpton, that berm tends to pan out to a bit flatter. So, that'd be my take, is that have a robust screening there along the highway.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. So, my other question, Mr. Bott, is this is considered a friendly 40B?
No.
No, it's just a regular 40B.
Just your straight 40B.
But it's not particularly hostile. I don't see anything hostile about it.
Well, I guess it depends on your perspective. If you look at the need for housing, most people would think, you know, that housing is a hostile thing. If someone showed up with 500 units at this spot, people might think that's a bit much. 60 units as well is a fairly reasonable number. The maximum number of units, and we talked about this a couple of years ago, that can be imposed upon a community the size of Carver is 200 units because it's a percentage of the housing units that you have. So, Plimpton probably doesn't have the housing units we have, so, you know, 60 units is probably below the maximum number that they can get. But as I tell people all the time, you cannot stop a 40B. The best thing you can do is negotiate with folks for a reasonable outcome.
Right, thank you. That was my, what I was heading towards. And also, the housing units there, if they should have school-aged children, that will affect Plimpton's school system more than ours, actually.
Correct. And, you know, the typical number that has been associated with the 2.75 children per household, that's sort of an antiquated number. That number's closer to 1.1 per. These are two-bedroom units, so it's likely you might start your house there, household there, and move somewhere else where you've got room for that colossal sewing sweat in the backyard and the pool and all the places that ride your tricycles and your big wheels and things like that.
And then move back when you're retired.
Yes, the circle of life.
Right.
So, I'm trying to think, how does this affect Carver? The only thing it really does for us is traffic, correct?
Correct. So, if you look at where this is at, I'm gonna make another one of those opinions that hopefully will stand the test of time. Most of the folks who are gonna be leaving this development are gonna drive down Ricketts Pond Road, take a ride on Spring Street, and get on 44 and go somewhere else, particularly if they're a school bus. The grocery store is at Shaw's, down Route 44 in one direction, and Market Basket in Plimpton in the other direction. Obviously, there'll be people who'll want to come and see all the coal stuff in Carver, and they're certainly welcome to, but I don't think this is going to impose any sort of burden, 60 units on the road this close to the highway.
Yeah.
I agree.
So, we're not talking, we're not talking 900 units here or anything.
The only place it backs up a lot is getting off 44. So, if you're coming from Plymouth, I know that access road tends to back up a lot, so if you have 60 additional units...
Well, hopefully, Plimpton's planning will, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
So, do you know, is Plimpton going through the whole, have they had public input and people have come to, you know, comment on it? What process are they going through?
Because at this point, we're at the site approval process. So, the first thing the developer has to do is make an appeal to one of the subsidizing agents, in this case, Mass Housing, to say, we would like to do this development. And they submit that to the town for the town's comments. After the town makes their comments, it goes back to Mass Housing. Mass Housing makes this site approval letter that says, here are the things that we heard about, these are the things to consider the merits of in your development. So, they send that back to them, and at that point, they're allowed to apply for the 40B. 40Bs are permitted through the Zoning Board of Appeals. There's typically a very limited process for that, but the Commonwealth also provides funds for towns to help supplement those, to give them funds to hire consulting engineers or attorneys and things, to help them negotiate with the developer on the parameters of development. So, we're probably at this point, with the comment period closing on the 25th, there may be a site approval letter out for them, and they may be able to apply by the end of the year, but I really don't know that for sure.
So, action by this board is a comment letter, but it seems like most of your comments, we all think are realistic. So, but if we did a site visit and we came back and had some additional comments, could we submit it by, not gonna do it by the 25th, but you say that you could submit later?
Absolutely. Or we could send this and send a supplemental letter as well, you know, on further review, as they say on the football games. Let's add these comments to it. But I think that, well, who knows what you'll see on the site, but it's...
So, I was just, thank you. I was just gonna suggest that if we have comments, we might want to ask Mr. Cannon if he'll put them together and add his.
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Good. Yeah, that one.
And I'm available to lead a site visit at the board's convenience.
Great. Any other questions by the board? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bott.
Mr. Don. Thank you. All right, we'll go back to our 6:10 agenda item, the approval of... The 6:10 item, the approval of election warrant for November 5, 2024. Mr. Cannon?
This is the warrant for the presidential elections. The town clerk is not available for the site, so we could get the board to approve the ballot as presented.
Ms. Hues, do you have any comments on it?
No, thank you. I seem to have lost my agenda on my computer, but I have it in, on paper. So, yeah. So, no, I'm all set with that.
Great. Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second to approve the election warrant for the November 5, 2024 election. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero. All right, 6:30, agenda item, American Rescue Plan Act, OPERA project request update. New project requests and requests for additional funding for OPERA, the OPERA well corrosion control project.
All right, so... I'll start with the request. So, there's two requests on the agenda. The first one, so the municipal well corrosion went out to bid. If you remember, it went out to bid in September. We did not get any bids. We had to go out to rebid, and we got one bid back, which came in at $92,828. The original amount approved was $61,559.30. So, that is an additional $31,268.70. The second request is for a generator for Town Hall. This request is actually going to be on the operations and maintenance capital item for FY '26. So, right now, the Town Hall has a, it's a small backup generator, but it's enough to run emergency management and keep some lights on. So, this would just be to replace the current generator. It's very old and is due to be replaced. We're calling it a backup project. Plymouth County has asked us to just throw in an additional project in the event one of our outstanding projects doesn't get finished in time, and they wanna, we'll say, quote-unquote, drop that project.
Any questions from the board?
Make a motion to approve these projects.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns? I have a couple of questions. So, the current generator for Town Hall, how old is it?
I don't have that answer.
Okay. But either way, he's thinking that if he doesn't get money through OPERA, he'll probably put on the capital question.
He said it was already, he put it in for his capital request.
Didn't we already get a generator?
That was a well, that was for the municipal well. This is for Town Hall.
It probably, I don't know, but it probably dates back to when they first built the addition on this building, which was 1997. But, yeah.
Probably.
Yep.
And where did the $61,000 come from if the bid's coming in at 92, sorry, jumping around for the municipal corrosion?
So, $61,000, yep, back to the municipal well corrosion. That was, I think, just an estimate that they... That was, I think, just an estimate that they had.
And one bid's been received. How many bids are we expecting?
We only received one.
Oh, so that's all we're getting.
It was the second time we went out to bid, because we had none the first time.
Right.
So because we received one, we have to accept it. So procurement law is, if you don't receive bids the first time, you have to go out a second time. If the second time you don't receive any, then you can choose a vendor, but because he received a bid, he can't then say, "We're not going to accept that bid," throw it out, and then go choose a vendor.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. No other questions? No any questions?
Nope, I do have another thing, but not that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero.
So the, for the general ARPA update. At the last meeting, you may recall, we had a bunch of items waiting, awaiting Plymouth County approval, and the amount is seven hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. I had those highlighted in blue. I recreated it here for you. This is what it looked like on the spreadsheet last time. All those items were approved. So now we're just awaiting the check. So for items that are approved and reimbursed, that's six hundred and sixty-eight ninety-eight. For approved and awaiting reimbursement, we now have that recently approved, seven hundred and twenty thousand, six twenty-two. So whenever they plan on coming in with a check, we'll get them on the agenda for that. Then we'll go through, we have four projects pending approval and the four outstanding projects. So for Plymouth County, we have four projects that are in process. We have the Carver Middle High School air quality system, the municipal well corrosion, the purchase of the electric vehicle, and the COA deck. So for the Carver Middle High School mechanical system, the update on that is the contract is complete. The Carver team and contractor had a kickoff meeting for the project last week. And Ron Griffin and Dave are aware of the timeline and the deadlines for this project. So they have asked the vendor if they could look into the equipment availability and getting all the equipment ordered in here as soon as possible, so we can get an invoice in on the project. Because Plymouth County has indicated that this project could be dropped if we don't get the invoices in on time, even though it's a school project and can't be done over until school break. So we do have federal funds to cover these projects in the event that were to happen. The municipal well corrosion, you just approved the additional funding for that. The assessing electric vehicle. So it was in Mexico at your last update. It is now in Texas, as of four days ago. We also asked the dealership if they had an ETA, and they don't. But we're going to still, you know, track this vehicle, you know, it is getting closer. And that fourth project, the COA deck, work will begin in November on that. Any questions on the projects in process, in progress?
No, I'm just looking at the delta, the negative one thirty-one, based on what we just voted on, is that, that's going up thirty, or thirty plus the generator?
It's the, right, that thirty-one thousand plus the generator, seventy-seven thousand two sixty-six seventy is what you just approved.
Okay, so that delta, that one thirty-one's going up.
That is the new, that is the amount, because we included that seventy-seven thousand in that calculation.
Well, I'm just looking, I'm looking wrong. The three sixty, the one thirty-one has the three sixty-four in it. The three sixty-four has the old sixty-one thousand dollar number in it. It's going to go to ninety-two, and that three sixty-four is going up by thirty, right?
Right.
But the generator isn't, so it's going up thirty thousand dollars from the one thirty-one to one sixty-one.
Uh, no, you'd be counting that twice then. Because this balance, this one thirty-one includes the seventy-seven thousand, which includes that thirty-one thousand.
Okay, one night. I'm looking at the municipal well corrosion number, the sixty-one thousand.
Yep.
That's in your three sixty-four, your three sixty-four is in this schedule that gets to your one thirty-one. But didn't we just say we're going to accept the one bid at ninety-two thousand?
Yes.
So now that one thirty-one's going to go up to like one sixty-one-ish. Am I looking at that wrong?
I think you're counting it twice, though, because I counted it down here already.
All right, that's fine.
Yeah, if you look at the front sheet, so, you're right, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying now.
Yeah, see the seventy-seven?
Got it, got it, the additional.
The additional funding is.
Got it, okay.
Okay, so then, the projects that are approved, and we're just awaiting Plymouth County approval. So basically, this is the electric vehicle for the health agent, the municipal well emergency repair, the database to assist officers' arrest, and the meter pit. So all four of these are, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just a quick question. The electric vehicles are for all the inspections, right, not just the health agent?
Right, they're going to be shared, I think, like a two-in-two type of a situation, but we had to assign it.
So it'll be conservation, health, assessors, and building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is one vehicle, correct?
Two.
Forty-seven's two vehicles?
Two.
No, the forty-seven is one vehicle in the blue, and then we have another one down here in the yellow. That forty-seven, eight oh five, awaiting delivery, the one that's in Texas.
Okay.
Two separate vehicles. The projects that, it's called level-three review with Plymouth County. It means the auditors have looked at it. Everything's good. We're just waiting for Plymouth County to have a meeting and put it on their agenda for approval. So this four hundred and twenty-two thousand nine seventeen. Hopefully, at the next Plymouth County Commissioners' meeting, they will approve that for reimbursement. So we kind of, technically, even though the water projects are reimbursement, and there's still kind of work going on, we technically only have these four projects and one backup project outstanding, which is great news, because for a while, we weren't sure what was going to get approved through Plymouth County. So then you see that one thirty-one, nine sixty, kind of hanging out there. But if you look at our federal funds, we have two hundred and thirty-one thousand left in our federal funds. So if we run into any issues with Plymouth County dropping a project, or, you know, if we don't finish in time according to their timeline, we do have a backup.
So if, if everything works correctly, and we don't have to use federal money, then we still have federal money sitting out there. Is there a timeline?
There's a timeline on that, but it's not as restrictive as Plymouth County. Plymouth County's goal was to make sure all the funds were spent, and because they were dealing with so many communities, they put stronger deadlines on, which is good, you know, kind of forced everyone to move along and not drag their feet. And it kind of gave us a backup plan, too. So if we do have that, any money left in federal, then we can move forward and find projects for that.
Great.
But that is already received. That's not reimbursement.
Mr. Chair.
Sheenwens?
Thank you. So what's the timeline for the federal funds to be earmarked?
Federal funds don't have to be earmarked. They only have to be expended by December thirty-first.
Sorry?
December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six, I believe that is.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Nope?
I don't, but I have a different question if I could ask.
Sure.
I think there's a typo on our agenda. I just want to double-check. It says it was posted at ten twenty-two. Just want to double-check your, that there was a typo made on the agenda in case anybody catches it, too. So at the top of the agenda, it says posted at ten twenty-two, which is today, so I'm assuming that was a typo. It might be good to correct that and let people know.
Yeah, the website will have the time, date, and stamp when it was posted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you know when it was posted?
It was Friday.
Okay.
October eighteenth at ten twenty AM.
All right, this says posted ten twenty-two at ten twenty AM on our, on our agenda, so.
Yeah, and I'm looking at the website right now, and that's what it says on the website as well, so it was incorrect.
Do you see it up on the screen? It says October.
No, but if you open up, if you open the agenda, can you open it?
If you open it up.
Can you open up the PDF that's there?
Oh, yeah, I know what you're saying, on the agenda, but on our website, right here.
No, I know.
Says the eighteen.
But the document says, just want to clarify that to people, that if you look at the top, that's in, it was, that's a typo, it's incorrect. Should've said ten eighteen, right?
Yes, you are correct. Thank you for pointing that out.
People are aware of that. Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you. And thank you for the ARPA update. That was very informative. Hopefully, we're on the right track. We're going to get those projects completed. Let's see, next item on the agenda, the town administrator update.
All right, well, I'll tell you, Mr. Chairman, to go back to the last previous, I'm very pleased that we've got past the audit from Plymouth County. That seems to be the big major hurdle, so I feel much more confident now going forward than I did when it was a couple of months ago. There was a little bit nervous as our timelines were getting closer. Just to update the board on the North Carver Water District, a little bit of bad news here. We did not receive the forty thousand dollar state grant to perform the engineering study at the North Carver Water District. If you remember that, when the North Carver Water District here was here during our joint meeting, we had that discussion. That money did not come forward to us. Now, with that said, the North Carver Water District, and again, it's their choice to spend it, they do have two hundred thousand dollars in a capital item, of which an engineering study was outlined in that capital item. So, again, that's their choice whether they're going to spend that or not.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
If I can just, real quick, what, sorry, what state grant were they applying for?
It was a Mass Works grant. I'm not sure which state agency they were, I just know it was a Mass Works grant.
Okay, because there's a five hundred thousand dollar DEP water protection grant?
There are other grants that they could be applying for. This is one we assisted with them when they were in their transition phase, and we were hoping to get the forty thousand dollars to conduct the engineering study, but again, it did not come forward.
Well, maybe you could just pass that on to them, their other.
Sure, we're happy to.
Yeah.
So there are two things that the North Carver Water District really does need to move, make sure they move forward with. One is a request for proposals. They need to have a distribution system operator. If you recall, previously, the town of Middleborough stopped being the distribution system operator for the North Carver Water District. The North Carver Water District needs to put that RFP out and bring those services on board. I am told by the chair that that RFP will be going out tomorrow. It'll be on the streets, so they are, they are actively pursuing a distribution system operator. With that said, I do know that DEP is aware that Middleborough is no longer doing that service for us, and DEP wants them to move forward as fast as possible. So a little bit of pressure there from DEP. And then also, they are still working on the RFP for the engineering study also. Again, that'd be something now, they have to relook at, reanalyze, now that we haven't received that state grant. I think they were looking for that funding source, but if that's off the table, they probably need to really look at, at their own. So that's my North Carver Water District update. Unless there are any questions. I don't have a date for the next meeting. I have to check with the chair.
I guess, do you have any, maybe you don't know, is the intent to get these studies back, so something could be asked for at town meeting? Or, I'm not sure if they could be done that quickly.
Well, certainly, so the distribution system operator would be money they have in their budget to hire a firm to do that. The engineering study, they would need to move fairly quickly to get this onto town meeting, and they should be looking at town meeting. I don't know what the cost would be to get the plant back up and running, but my feeling will be, it will be significant.
Sure.
So, they definitely need to.
Okay. Next item, town, any questions by the board? No? Town administrator goals update.
Yeah, I'll just run through real quick. So we did just have goal number one, the OPERA projects. We just had our update on OPERA. Again, feeling better about OPERA right now than I was a couple of months ago, so looking forward to getting those projects finished. Goal number two is about the North Carver Water District. Again, this one gets a little tougher now, I would say, that we lose more control with the North Carver Water District. The chair has made it clear they want to be a separate district. They want to be a separate entity from the town. We're always here to support them, but they are trying to do this on their own, with their own, with their own commissioners. They have brought legal counsel on board. I know he's helping with the RFP. Again, we're here to assist them any way we can, but it makes it a little bit difficult without us being directly involved. I will say that.
Sure.
Working with the finance director to come up with realistic, step-by-step guidelines for the fiscal year twenty-six fiscal budget. I know that's a little bit further on in the agenda here. We can have that budget discussion. I have put out a draft schedule for that. We are moving forward with that. You know, budgets were due from the department heads today. They'll be evaluated by the finance director, and she'll bring them to me while we sit down. We have a series of meetings, come up with every department head in a couple of weeks, just to sit down, go over the budgets. Particularly, you know, you really want to look at the new request. Look at individual line items, too, to see if we're underfunding or overfunding any line items. Sometimes things are no longer used, and then sometimes, mostly, I know last year, it was inflation, was a real budget buster. So many things that you're just buying the exact same quantity year after year. The cost has gone up significantly. Good select board decision-making by providing thorough and accurate information. Again, this is one that continues to be a challenge, a very dynamic situation. I feel like I have a very dynamic job. A lot of things come in through my desk every single day. But the board has been very gracious with me with their time, so I do feel like I'm able to get that information out to the board. Again, it's just always one of those things that has a continuous effort to make that happen. Succession planning. I do plan on having individual sit-downs. Again, in a couple of weeks, we'll have individual sit-downs with the department heads to go over their budgets. At that point, I'm going to ask also for their succession planning, just to make sure we have something on, on the table. And, you know, and it'll be different for every department. The larger departments have assistant department heads. You know, it's a more natural thing. It's more the smaller departments about what would happen and how we handle those situations. That's how I feel about it. But we'll, I'll have those discussions, and we'll come up with some type of a plan.
And to the chair, I think it's also the backup, too, so if somebody's out for a couple of weeks, that there's, you know, you can go to the department, still get a report or get information, and they don't say, you know, "I can't get that to you for two weeks because so-and-so's away."
Yeah.
So I think it's not only the succession planning, it's succession planning, it's the, you know, the backups for the departments that other people need to be trained to be able to do some of the duties.
Yeah, and we do that cross-training in our office, and I know the other, I certainly know the building department does it, too.
Yeah.
And, you know, we'll make sure that's happening.
Great.
And then the last thing is the newsletter. So we got the first edition last month. I'm working on the next edition now. I have decided to do them at the end of the month, with the select board having the first and third Tuesdays. I think it's better that way. We can have the information available from the select board means to put into the newsletter. But it seems to be well-received, but quite a few positive reviews about it, so very pleased with that.
Great.
And just as a follow-up, I did meet with the town administrator and provided feedback for goals. So we had a meeting, and I gave Glenn a lot of material for creating the goals that we talked about, too. So maybe we can talk about that at a future meeting, too.
Sure. You can have those discussions with the department heads, so, good thing to do.
Great. Any comments from the board? Nope. All right, next item, the budget kickoff meeting.
Sure, so I know the board, again, we did put into the, into your packet, and I will always call it a draft, right, on the draft schedule, because again, it is just dynamic. It's hard to get everybody on board at the same time. Things have to change, you have to be flexible with this. But you can see, you know, again, the budgets were due today, capital requests were due today. Gives us a little bit of time, the finance director and myself, to sit down, look at these numbers, make sure they're realistic. Sit down with each individual department head. And, you know, and I think it's a good check, and, you know, even if their, even if their budget is flat-lined, it's still good to sit down and just check in with them, see how they're feeling, how their workload is, you know, improvements they can look at, or something like that. I do know that the chair is looking for a Saturday meeting. I'd like to have some of that discussion with the board right now, whether or not we go to sometime in November, whether it be, and, you know, I have looked at this kind of block between November fifth and November seventh, going with the department head meetings. If the board, we want to look at like a, a November second date.
Coming up fast.
Yeah, it is.
It's coming up real fast.
Mr. Chair.
Sheun.
I may. I'd like to suggest we don't have these meetings on Election Day. You have it listed as November 5th, the first meetings.
Correct, but those are department head meetings. I feel they're only department head meetings, not for the board. Those are just myself, the Finance Director, and the department heads.
Thank you.
Those are the individual meetings.
Thank you for that explanation.
Sorry, sorry to... Yeah, sorry, I mislead you.
That's all right.
So if I could somewhat interject. The idea was that, working backwards... I'm sorry, I don't see on... Do we have a date for town meeting? There is, April 8th. Okay. You know, saying, you know, "Town meetings, April 8th." We want to have a budget completed done by March 8th. And the idea is to have a balanced budget 30 days beforehand, so we can, you know, we can take action if something happens from state aid changes or things like that. So staying on that timeline, what we wanted to have was a kickoff meeting. I guess it's a little bit different than what we've done in the past, where we're actually going to take on revenue. So that everybody can answer all questions related to revenue. Where is it solar, everything? And the, I know, the working group, you can feel free to comment on, but the work's done a lot of work and has made some recommendations to the Select Board's policies that we could discuss and talk about and eventually decide what we want to do on it. The talk would be, the discussion would be taking revenue, taking what used to be called shared costs, now we're calling shared liabilities?
Fixed liabilities.
Fixed liabilities? What's in them? There's been some discussions back and forth on how it should be handled. It gets to the point where I think the board needs to get involved and make a decision with regards to what we want to see. And then we talk about the split. How's the split calculated? There's been various methodologies used in the past. And then the thought process was, instead of going into the budgeted line items, because that's more the work by the Town Administrator and the Finance Committee doing their work, we would just listen to the department heads, you know, very high-level challenges. You know, "I need a body, I've got this, I've got that," you know, something that's new. Not, we're not going to zero in on everything and make them... Because that's something that, you know, the Town Administrator is handling. And maybe we talk about capital, because they're doing work on it as well. This might be the first ask of capital. It might be something that's reviewed a few times. But, and then, you know, obviously, we're not involved in the detail. It comes back to us, but we get a little bit of a better understanding as to what the challenges are. That's kind of the concept. Am I getting it right?
Yeah.
And so, Mr. Chair, when would that meeting be?
Well, we have, based on this timeline, I guess November 2nd worked out the best.
The 9th, you don't think the 9th? I'm kind of looking at...
The 9th is Veterans Day, is that right?
I was...
It is Veterans Day weekend. A little bit concerned.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do a weekend.
It'd be a Saturday meeting.
Well, the 9th is a Saturday. But you're saying that might be a conflict for the weekend?
Yeah, I think there's a number of Veterans Day activities in town. We probably should avoid that day.
On the Saturday, okay. All right.
So can we do it the following Saturday?
The 16th?
Well, we ran into a little bit of a problem, though, with that, getting the work done by that date from a standpoint of having people participate.
Oh, no, that's fine. If department head needs more time, I'm fine with it.
No, you want to pull it back to the 2nd, November 2nd is the proposal.
So the only, if we push it back past the 19th, then we're kind of running into... One of the goals is to make sure the Finance Committee can go off and running on this thing, so that, you know, in the past, they kind of get it, you know, they were getting it, you know, not enough time to go through it. We want to get them plenty of time to go through their due diligence. So if it's, if we pushed it off to...
The 16th, you think it's too late? November 16th?
Yeah, the 16th won't work for scheduling.
Okay.
And why, is that a...
We have key staff members who are not available.
Yeah.
I mean, Thanksgiving's not until the 28th, so you still have the 23rd, but is that getting way too late now?
Yeah, I know. I could not do the 23rd.
Which one could you not do?
The 23rd and 24th.
What about the 28th?
Well, that's a Thursday. We're looking for a Saturday.
The 28th is Thanksgiving.
The 28th is Thanksgiving.
Right, never mind that. How about...
That's a tough week. So is the 2nd a problem for anybody?
I just didn't know if we'd be prepared enough by the 2nd. That was my concern.
You didn't know what, Dan?
We may not be ready enough for the 2nd with the information. That was...
Well, let's have...
Because if you're meeting with the department heads on the 5th, 6th, and 7th, if they want to talk to us about their needs and how things are shaping up, it seems like that would have been too early to me.
Mr. Cannon, what do you think would suit the department heads?
Well, I think they'll be ready, you know, to step up, especially where it's not line item by line item.
By December 30th, or December 3rd? Or by what date?
I was suggesting November 16th.
Well, I just wanted, we want to do it like a Tuesday night, even at 5 o'clock?
Yeah.
For the typical, this meeting, I guess, it could be two meetings. I don't know how long it'll take. Typically, these to be four to five hours, is that...
Yeah.
Yeah, but we were discussing budget line items in those meetings. So those were longer. I think this would be shorter.
We could do a Tuesday meeting.
With the November 12th?
Yes.
It looks like it might work. Would that work? I think that's a good date. I think that'd be maybe at 5 o'clock. And, you know, if we do have to continue, we'll... But again, I think if it's high level, if it's not line item by line item, that's usually what really kind of bogs you down.
Takes up the time.
Yeah.
I guess the question around that, what's our meeting schedule in terms of? We're not going to meet on the 5th, so we'd be meeting on the 12th. And if you had other business, you know, would you, you'd have to combine it if you think you have enough time?
As you just said, we could do what we can and then set a new date for the rest.
Okay.
Yeah, that seems to make sense.
As mine.
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to be targeting November 12th.
12th.
Great.
You had to post and send out a notice, too?
Yeah. I think we'd want that to be a joint meeting with the Finance Committee.
Yes, and the School Committee.
And the School Committee for the split.
Because we're talking about the split, yeah.
What about capital outlaying?
In capital, capital outlaying.
And is this when we begin interviewing the department heads?
No, I don't think so.
No.
Yeah.
Yes, no. But I just had one second.
The idea was to talk to a department head and just give them like five minutes to tell us, and we're not going to grill them on line items.
Yeah, but I think it's the, it's kind of, if you will, I hate to say it, but the budget busters. If somebody's looking for new staff members, that's a big hit to the budget. Again, if you're looking about the cost of inflation, I did talk about that a little bit, but that's usually not a budget buster. It's, you know, it's if you're putting in new programs, if you're hiring new staff, those are the things where the budgets really jump up a significant amount. And those are the kinds of things I think the board is...
We need to hear that.
Yeah, exactly.
But the department heads will be invited to that?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
All the department heads?
Yes, all the department. And many times, you know, Mr. Chairman, again, those larger items are the ones where you, you know, you get five requests, and you can only, you know, fund three. And you have to make those tough decisions about which ones stay and which ones go, so.
So just one question, since there's so many different departments and people involved in this meeting, do you anticipate having the meeting here?
That was going to be my question, too, yeah.
I only ask that because if you're thinking that we need to check on maybe having the meeting somewhere else before we technically schedule the meeting, should we check to make sure there's the room, whatever room we want, is available?
I think we probably should.
Five members of the Finance, five members of the School Committee.
So check with the Fire Department, maybe?
You have two big conference rooms. Give me the Fire Police, see if there's a...
Yeah, Fire Police. So we'll find a room, I'll check, just to make sure. Because I think it would be better in a different facility?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, I think so. I think it worked well in prior years.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you'll get back to us with a date on that once you check out availability.
Yeah, we'll, yeah. If you can just pencil in that date, we'll confirm.
Tuesday, November 5th at 5:00 p.m. Is that correct?
12th. November 12th?
I meant to say 12.
November 12th.
Yes, at 5:00 p.m.
Mr. Chairman, if I just have a few more things, just to announce the... So we did receive an Economic Development Plan Grant for $80,000 from the state. So that's a good thing Mr. Bott stepped away, but something he'll be working on in the future, in the near future. So that's a good thing for us. I did see that the Pickleball Court, not a lot of construction out there, but they have brought in some fill to kind of level it out. So that's hopefully going to get underway. I don't have a hard date for completion, but we are thinking maybe sometime in November. We did just finish up Employee Appreciation Week. I thought it went very well. Gave me a chance to see some departments that I really don't get a chance to visit with all the time. So it's nice to be able to see staff, you know, face-to-face. I'm a big believer in face-to-face meetings. I can tell you right now, I'm not a big Zoom guy. So it's just nice to be able to get out there and meet up with them. I will, for staff appreciation, I will say this, and I think a few of the Select Board members came in while they were working on the roof. There's quite a pounding here at Town Hall. I personally want to thank staff for putting up with the nuisance, if you will. We did have the third graders come through. I thought it was kind of great. The Fire Department also had a Fire Prevention Month. I thought it was a good timing. When they had the third graders come through, it's always good to, you know, review what happened if there is an event at your home, you know, particularly how to, you know, how to escape, how to meet up with your family when you're done. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. All right, next item, the Approval of Minutes for September 18th, 2024, and October 1st, 2024. Anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve September 18th.
Second.
Motion, I've been second. Any questions, issues, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Motion to approve October 1st.
Second.
We have a motion to approve October 1st, and we have a second. Any questions, issues, or concerns with that, October 1st minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Select Board announcements.